Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, the twenty-third, times nine o'clock. Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. If we could have you identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Sean Rain, Paramex.
Tim Fong, Treasurer's Office.
Mike Work, Operations.
Tom Hattie, Solidways.
Tony Gaddis, Public Affairs Office.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Brad Smith, The Assessor's Office.
Robin Swain, Procurement.
Liz Liddon, Communications.
Good IT guy over here.
Phil McGreen, Clerk.
Okay, uh, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. We have some unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion, uh, on favor say aye. 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 Motion carries. We have some resolutions, or do we?
No, Development Services is up next.
Okay.
Revised findings of facts, Richard?
Okay.
Yeah, it's Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you recall, the August tenth public hearing, Ms. Julie Hunt had applied for a variance. She was the one that had a red barn that was starting to look too close to property line. We've prepared revised findings of facts to support the approval of that variance and submit those for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I've read the revised findings of facts, and I'll make a motion to approve them. And the conclusions of law for application number two zero two two zero one four seven zero V, Julie Hunt.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, well, you've heard the motion, uh, on favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we'll get to some new business. We have some resolutions. I will open the public hearing on resolution two seven eight two, resolution for sole source procurement of information technology services from Compinet. Is there any discussion on this, uh, resolution?
Chairman, commissioners, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on that sole source. So this is for the courthouse, Benjamin, and non-ECF portions of the dispatch center IT system. So this is to get Compinet on board for highly complex IT issues that arise and need prompt attention.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, anybody else wish to say anything? I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two seven eight two. Uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two seven eight two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, on favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I will open the, uh, public hearing on resolution two seven eight three, uh, resolution for sole source procurement of research and advisory services for information technology. Go ahead.
Chairman, commissioners, so IT must regularly purchase consultation services regarding, um, you know, sticking to industry standards, best practices. So this is through Gartner, and they are the only licensed provider for research and advisory services.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, any other testimony? I'll then close the public hearing on resolution number two seven eight three. Is there, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two seven eight three as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, on favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll now open a public hearing on resolution number two seven eight four, resolution for adoption of revised and updated investment policy. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, Tim, the only thing that I'm seeing on here that's changed is the reporting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, so we've taken out yield to, or added yield to maturity, take out weighted average maturity and weighted average book yield. And then we've taken out Moody's and Poor, or Moody's, um, just going with S and S and P. So I think that's the only change.
That's right.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the policy change? Okay, uh, I will close the public hearing on resolution number two seven eight four, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make that motion. I move to approve resolution two seven eight four as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, on favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'm now open a public hearing on resolution number two seven eight five, a resolution for sole source procurement for implementation of Oracle software. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just happy to address, this is our payroll system and now our upcoming, uh, financial system, right, so that we've invested heavily in.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two seven eight five, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two seven eight five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, on favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two seven eight six, resolution for sole source procurement of security systems. Anyone here to talk about that? Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Chairman, commissioners, uh, this sole source is to enter into an agreement with Compinet, uh, for a maintenance service agreement for the Genetek security systems here at the courthouse and at other locations around the county.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? Okay, I'll close the, uh, public hearing on resolution two seven eight six, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two seven eight six as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will now open the, uh, public hearing on resolution two seven eight seven, resolution for sole source procurement of professional services, uh, for courtroom audiovisual systems. Is there, uh, anyone here to speak to this one?
I'd like to. Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this one, uh, as well is for Compinet, uh, to enter into a maintenance service agreement for the room kit devices in all of the courtrooms, both here and at juvenile, for, uh, upkeep and maintenance and updates on that equipment.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two seven eight seven. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've reviewed the documents, and I'll move to approve resolution two seven eight seven as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, is there, uh, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Next up, I'll open the public hearing on resolution two seven eight nine, resolution for sole source procurement of Heart Interective Services. Anyone speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, this is our, this is the services portion of our elections equipment. Heart is the vendor that provides the, the tabulation equipment, so we have millions of dollars worth of equipment, that's just the service contract for that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will close the, uh, public hearing on resolution two seven eight nine, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two seven eight nine as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Uh, we now have licenses, uh, catering permits, uh, new licenses, license transfer. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, before we make the motion, I just, I'm looking at Richard Beck here, looking at the stone crossing ones. We were gonna have, uh, Development Services, look into that, I believe that's the venue that's changed names about three times, um, just to make sure that everything was now squared away for, uh, events of this size. I know this is for the, the catering permit, but I want to make sure before we approve the catering permit that they're able to help us.
Members of the board, we did have our code enforcement group go out, but this, for these particular, uh, requests for catering permits, as far as we can tell, that they are complying with the, the current requirements. But we are taking a look at some of the, uh, placement of some of their sound equipment, things that they're using out there, to see if it complies with what was approved.
Yeah. And the size of the events, do we know what the, the size is?
I don't know the, the number for this one, I get this one in, in Nick Farrell confused, but, um...
As long as we're monitoring him, I just want to make sure, because we've had some issues right there.
Each, each time one of these catering permits comes up, Art Perfect at our office takes a look to verify he actually has a, essentially a book that lists all, all the criteria that, that are there in ways that what the catering permit is proposing against those conditions.
Well, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead then, and I'll make the motion to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including nine catering permits, three new licenses, two license transfers, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we, uh, we have with us our distinguished clerk that is all rested and feeling good.
Yep, uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, it's good to be back with you guys. Had the good pleasure last week being with the Association of Clerks, uh, up in Sandpoint, and, uh, just a good opportunity to go over some of the things upcoming, especially, you know, let, some legislation and other things. I think one of the big things that we've been working on that you probably wouldn't be aware of, but, um, I'm gonna get the House bill number wrong, but Transparent Idaho is the Controller's Office, right? You can go look at all the state's financial information, we're one of the pilot counties in terms of getting our information on there, and so we did a big exercise with the state controller's team, uh, working on that information to try and get all the other counties together. So we're kind of part of helping lead that effort, and I think, you know, in particular, Tim Sturgis has really worked hard on it, uh, getting them the information, and so I think that was one of the successes up there. Um, in terms of other updates, um, there is a Boise School District trustee election coming up on January sixth.
January sixth?
Earth, good point, sorry, I was talking about a Freudian slip. On September sixth, thank you for the correction, Mr. Chairman, very important. Uh, the, uh, we don't run that election, so it's a little bit odd, we're, because we do provide advice and assistance for the school district, but this is one of those odd, it's an odd date, odd time. So we're fielding questions, trying to get voters pointed to the right resources through the Boise School District, but I'm sure you're seeing signs and stuff pop up, uh, but we're getting close to Election Day, so...
How, how do they escape the consolidate election? Is that in the law, apparently?
It's, um, a recognition, it's very specific in the school district's charter when they will hold their trustee election. So like Bonds and Levees, we run their elections that fit under consolidation, but the Boise School District predates statehood, and so the state of Idaho recognized the Boise School District Charter, uh, when...
Really?
When state was... And so there's just a long history, so there's a few things that the Boise School District doesn't follow the same path every other school district does, and this just happened, and it, I've read the charter, I have a copy of it, it's oddly specific. The charter doesn't cover a lot of topics, but their election of trustees is one that it does, and so hence why they have it at an odd time.
And it, and it articulates when the election should be held?
Yes, that, yep. Because that's actually, the district would like us to run the election, the problem for us is it's so close to the August election date, uh, that we would, we just can't, the timing's too close for us to pull it off.
And that whole, the various, the, the polling places are very schools.
Schools, yep, they use the schools. We provide all the information, so the voter information, all that, we supply them with a lot of information to help them try to be successful, and they actually, I mean, coincidentally, because you have the sole source, they contract with Heart right now to actually do the ballot counting and other things like that. So they actually provide a professional contract for that piece.
Okay, well, there'll be a school board election coming up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Sixth of September, yes.
We have the application for delinquent assessments. Phil, do you want to address that, or do you want Sarah to?
Sarah would definitely, I am familiar with it, but Sarah is on the range, and Sarah knows what it is, yes.
Make a motion on it. There she's up there, Sarah. I see her face.
Yep.
Is that on our agenda here?
Yes.
It's the only thing to make a motion on.
Oh. Okay.
Can't hear you, Sarah.
Nope, Sarah. While we're waiting for Sarah, um, these are for four districts, the districts are West Boise Sewer District, City of Boise, the Eagle Sewer District, and Star Sewer and Water District. And it's the twenty-two statement of authority and application for delinquent assessments and fees.
Do you want to table this, I can get information before the end of the meeting?
Uh, yeah, do we need to table, we'll just...
Or you just wait, yeah.
Yeah, we'll just move it to the end, come back to it, okay.
Okay, she said her mic's not working.
Okay, well, we'll do that, we'll, we'll table till the end. No, we're not gonna table, just circle back.
Circle back.
I think it just gives them the authority to place a lien on certain properties that are delinquent.
Yeah.
That we can come back to it.
We can come back to it, yeah. Okay, thank you, uh, distinguished clerk. We'll now, uh, take up the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, uh, on favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have personnel actions.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain unfiled in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, on favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Do we, we have someone from the Assessor's Office, Brad, would you like to?
Good morning, commissioners. Yeah, we have a hundred tax cancellations that are going through. Bob is actually in, uh, conference opening, if you want me back after that, right?
Okay.
And these are mostly the result of House Bill five eighty-nine, which is the, basically no deadline for the state exemption, so people can apply throughout the year, which creates all that extra paperwork, but it's good for the property owners.
Right. Okay. Any other issues or questions?
Uh, so we have, moving on, I guess to item number seven, we have fifty-six BTAs total that've come through, other than logged into the auditor's office. Thirty-five of those are commercial and twenty-one residential, and as you know, from the email I sent you, uh, we will be doing some settlement requests, so we do have to get approval from, uh, from the three of you before we can move forward with the appellants, so... And I have that first one out there, and I have another one that's already lined up to come in too, so we'll be, over the next, uh, couple of months, I'll be sending those out to you.
Okay, all right, great, all right.
And Brad, when you send those out, what kind of turnaround timeframe do you expect from the board?
Well, with, uh, kind of typical process, some of these have been kind of kicked down the road because we don't have time to inspect during BOE because it's such a fast time period. So some of these, we're getting out, and we're doing the inspections, and we go out, and as soon as we do the inspection, we meet with the property owner. Typically, um, and we come back and we, we look at maybe some different comps because of condition or something, and we're gonna make an adjustment. And then the, the property owners, I mean, usually within a couple of days is kind of what they expect for a response to come back with a new proposed value.
There's no timelines or anything?
There's no, there's no real deadline unless we're up against the hearing date, which those are usually pushed out a couple of months, so, yeah, there's no, no hard deadline, which is nice, but we do have the obligation to the property owner. Once we go out and inspect, it's kind of nice to get back in a timely manner, because we don't know if they're gonna accept that value or not, so the sooner we can get that value to them, I think the more likely our chances to get it accepted, so...
Thank you.
And the only other thing we got going, we're getting ready to inspect about fifty thousand parcels, and I sent them out to you yesterday in regards to the areas that we'll be doing a physical inspection.
Fifty thousand?
Right? That's a lot of...
That's a lot of... Dornard.
Yeah, yeah, luckily we just drive by.
We're drive-bys.
Drive-bys. Okay.
My silver pictures are kind of blurry.
All right, okay. All right, well, thanks, Brad, uh, do we have a motion on the tax cancellations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one hundred tax cancellations for twenty twenty-two, and authorize the chair to send documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Thank you. I'll note that this is not actually a cancellation of tax, it's an adjustment.
Okay.
So you've heard the motion, uh, on favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the Treasurer's Office, do we have a report from the Treasurer's Office, guys, go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners, um, Beth is at the Idaho Housing and Finance Conference today. In the Treasurer's Office, the most significant thing happening right now beyond the, the normal is a, um, auction. We have three properties that have taken a tax, even the auction is currently ongoing, that ends, um, this Thursday at four P M. And there's three properties, uh, listed, two of them have been getting bids, there's one small, kind of oddly shaped parcel that's landlocked in between some housing, and that one hasn't received any bids, but it looks like the other two were, uh, receiving bids, and those will likely...
Be sold.
Be sold in the next couple of days.
Okay. Anything, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, okay, we have, uh... Landfill, a few, a couple of fee waiver requests, would you like to tell us about that, Tom?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, distinguished commissioners, we've had two applications for, uh, waiver of fees, and, uh, both of them, I would like to discuss just briefly with you.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is Mr. Ian Parish, he is, uh, an outdoorsman who enjoys recreating in, in the south and north ends of the county. He was very disheartened by what he saw, of just lots of litter out in the areas where he likes to recreate, and he is concerned about just the image that it gives off and the fact that it could ruin the ability for others to recreate in the area. All he's asking for is just a waiver of the fees, he is fine paying, uh, going through the contractor as normal, he just wants to get a box out there and not necessarily have to pay for the landfill fees as he's doing a big cleanup that, uh, appears to benefit the, the county's own, anyone who wants to recreate in South and North County. Uh, the other applicant...
It sounds like he was out mountain bike riding.
Uh, dirt bike, but yeah.
Yeah, dirt bike, right, right, okay. So is there a lot of trash, did he give you an idea of how much was out there, it looks like people are just dumping?
Uh, so I decided to go check it out, just when he gave me the area, there's a ton of trash down there, when you hit about, just south of the railroad tracks, uh, just a little bit south of Pleasant Valley, Ginnmore Road.
Okay.
There is mountains of trash out there.
Is that Harden, whose trash area is that?
Uh, that would be Harden, yeah, that's an, that's unincorporated area, so that would be Harden, they'd be the ones who would have to drop and service the box out there.
Well, I'm just wondering if this is something, instead of having an individual try, attempt to do this on their own, if we shouldn't get Harden out there to just go pay them to just go pick it up and take it to the dump.
It's not a bad idea, I'd, I'd definitely want to check the franchise to see if the actual collection would be on their side, or if they would just be placing, uh, receptacles for someone else to fill, but there is gobs of trash out there that you'd have to handle.
I just, you know, I mean, Mr. Chair, I'm just thinking that an individual probably isn't necessarily prepared to handle, uh, trash, not knowing what's in it, it could be, you know, toxic, I mean, who knows, right? I'd feel more comfortable having Harden, uh, contracted with Harden to actually do this cleanup, or at least look into it before we have the individual attempt to do it, does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense.
Well, I think it would be appropriate for, uh, for Mr. Ian Parish to work with Harden and just determine what they're, what the best...
He could show him where it's at, and yeah.
Yeah, what the best avenue is.
And that's what we've been advising him to do, I've just, I made it very clear to Mr. Parish that we would only be handling the actual disposal fee itself, he'd be working with the contractor to do when the box is gonna get set down, certain size of box, really all the other logistics of actually getting the trash serviced, we would just be waiting the landfill fee for him.
Okay.
Well, I think we, yeah, again, we need to do more than that, this is on AD County's property, um, so I think we're probably number one, the one liable and responsible for it, so... so I think we're probably number one, the one liable and responsible for it, so let's get Harden out there. But I agree to, that we can waive the landfill fee, obviously, if we're gonna be doing that.
That's what the poor is now. It's not really A D County property, it's just A D County in the, in the
It's public property, right?
Uh, some of it's B L M.
B L M.
B L M, yeah. Do we send a bill to B L M?
You try.
I would love to do that. I'm not sure about the, uh, responsibility.
Okay.
Uh, the second app, the second applicant is Mister Robbie Birch. He is working on an Eagle Scout project. He just wants to clean up roadside trash just a little bit south of Gallen Field. Uh, wouldn't, I don't even think he'd actually need a container. I think he was just planning on bagging it up and bringing it up for us, so the uh, the impact to landfill space would be negligible at best, but I think it would be a very good way for him to serve the community and also for us to show that we support people cleaning up public land.
So the question for us is the waiver of fees on these two. All right, I'll accept the motion.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to approve the two landfill fee waiver requests as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. Uh, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have, uh, approval of minutes of the indigent hearing. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mister Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion. Uh, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay, now we have, uh, agreement number one for seven eight four Juvenile Court Services Operating Plan. Do we have anybody here to speak to that?
I don't see Alison.
I don't see Alison. Agenda, okay.
Make the motion if you're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, I move to approve the Juvenile Court Services Operating Plan. Authorize the Chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have some, uh, exhibitor agreements that, uh, came in a little late, uh, that's basically already been signed, so we need, uh, have a motion to authorize that.
Yeah, I just have one question. Since when do we do bull riding out there?
It's, it's, it's a mechanic.
Oh, it's a mechanical ball.
It's a mechanical ball.
I don't think we have a rodeo out there. Did I miss something when I was?
It's a mechanical ball and it's ten bucks. If you want to go ride.
How would you know?
Cause I was out there. I didn't ride it, but I saw, no, I saw it there.
Okay, I double bug dare you, you're gonna ride it.
Okay, I'll ride after you.
This is gonna be great. We should incorporate this in the county picnic.
There we go.
There you go. Just keep it out there. Mister Chair, I had moved to approve and ratify the nine exhibitor agreements for the twenty twenty-two Western Idaho Fair. Signed by Commissioner Beck as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, all right, now we have Parks and Waterways. We have two, uh, agreements, uh, for the event center at Parks and Waterways.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, we have a letter to, uh, authorizing, uh, Marika Dudik to act on behalf of the Board of Community Guardian as reflected in Resolution number two six three seven.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to authorize Marika Dudik to send the letter to the various banks notifying them of her authority granted under Resolution number two six three seven to act on behalf of the Board of Community Guardians as reflected in Resolution number two six three seven.
I'll second that. I just have a quick question though. Since, um, Board of Guardians was moved from the Commissioner's office into the Clerk's office, is this, the Commissioners still need to sign that instead of the Clerk?
I, uh, I think it's a great question. I actually believe so. You still technically are statutory.
I just wanted to make sure since, yeah, we've made that move.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing the work part of it, but yeah.
Okay, well, you've heard the motion. Uh, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have sixty-nine agreements now that needs to be approved and ratified. Is there a discussion on any of the agreements?
Yes, Mister Chair. On number fourteen, uh, fourteen seven nine eight with the Idaho State Public Defense Commission, um, Tony Geddes is here and just he may want to speak to this one. Because you're here, I thought we
Commissioners, thank you. I just, in case you had any questions, uh, this is an important source of revenue for us, uh, nearly one and a half, nine dollars. Goes to a lot of things, uh, including seven attorneys, um, two legal assistants, an investigator. We do a lot of, uh, trainings, uh, trial schools, death penalty seminars, this one. Very important yearly, uh, income grant, strange, in public transportation. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And this is over and above the, uh, the sales tax replacement we're getting.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on any of these agreements?
I don't have anything, Mister Chair.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mister Chair, I move to approve the sixty-nine agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've approved another sixty-nine agreements. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tony. I'm glad it wasn't for the concealed weapons one.
We will, uh, be in recess. Thanks for everybody's participation.
Yeah, he was. I'm failing on many fronts on this one. Sewer districts are gonna be in trouble.
Okay, let's go back on record.
You're back on the record?
Uh, well, uh, good morning. Today is August twenty-third, uh, time nine, nine, uh, thirty-three. Information is back on the record because we overlooked one item of business that we need to take care of. Uh, is there a, uh, is, is that sewer thing? Would you give us a, a brief description?
Sure, do you want me to?
I'm happy to. Sarah wasn't able to speak on the bridge, huh?
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay, well, I'll do my best to interpretate, interpret what Sarah has taught me about this.
Okay.
Uh, sewer and water districts, uh, per pursuant to Idaho code are allowed to apply for, uh, liens on properties through the commission for those people that have not paid their assessments and fees. And that's what this process is. Uh, they would be, uh, supplying you with a letter and a list of parcels, uh, that are associated with people that have not paid their fees for water and sewer districts. And then Sarah would go through, if approved by the board, and place those, uh, liens on properties for, uh, and, and they would be delinquent assessments and be collected the same way that we would collect property tax. So it just allows the sewer and water districts to regain some of the revenue that they desperately need. So that's my best understanding of the process.
Like weed pest mosquito.
Yeah, and this today is just letting the districts know that they can do that and they'll circle back to do everything trying to say.
And you'll be in charge of that circle back?
Uh, I think these two will be in charge of that circle.
Are these the only sewer districts that we're, we work with or have authority for? Or is there more sewer districts?
That's a good question. Is there, um, there are.
Marion's not on there. Marion has her own.
I'll follow up with Sarah.
She, she said in the chat, that is it.
All right.
All right.
If we need to.
We can always circle back.
Exactly.
All right, Mister Chair. Yep, I move to approve the twenty twenty-two statements of authority and application for delinquent assessments and fees for the four tax, taxing districts as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'm sorry about that.
The open business meeting with August twenty-third is now in adjournment. Thank you.
Do you want to hand those?
Well, good morning. Today is August twenty-third. The time is, uh, nine thirty-five. Uh, the board is in session to conduct its, uh, as medical A D County Emergency Medical Services District, and, uh, all three Commissioners are present. If we could get you to identify yourself.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Phil McGray, clerk.
At IT guy, okay. First up, we have a resolution. Uh, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution two seven eight eight. Resolution for sole source procurement of the American Heart Association course.
Yes, Mister Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Um, this is just a sole source resolution for us to be able to purchase the cards that when people get their certifications for CPR, uh, pediatric advanced life support and advanced cardiac life support, you get a card.
No card for Stop the Bleed?
No card for Stop the Bleed. We could probably start making some.
Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution two seven eight eight. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to approve Resolution number two seven eight eight as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, I'll hear, I'll accept the motion in the claims journal for August nineteenth.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have some pers, uh, personnel actions. Uh, I'll accept the motion on personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Uh, next, we have, uh, five agreements. Would you like to speak to any agreements or, uh, anything we need to know extra? We've already, we've already gone through them.
Yeah, Mister Chair, the, the agreements are pretty straightforward. Most of these are renewals. There is the agreement with the Kuna Fire District for the remodel of Station One. There will be another agreement coming, um, in the not-too-distant future for the alerting system that goes with the station that wasn't part of the original project, so that's not on, on this agenda, but the rest of these are just renewals.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mister Chair, I move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The, next on our agenda is EMS update.
Yes, Mister Chair, Commissioners, uh, got fairly quick update today. Had a, a good meeting, uh, and just for Commissioner Canyon, since she wasn't here last week, we met with Medicaid the week prior and they are working with a consultant to, um, start building the state plan amendment. I have a follow-up meeting with Medicaid, week after next, uh, where we're actually gonna set some timelines. Uh, but that work has begun, so that was a, an excellent meeting and it was just us and, and the Medicaid director, so.
Oh, great.
I was pretty pleased with that. It sounds like the timeline, uh, could be as quick as, you know, ninety days to get approval back from CMS. Uh, PCG, the, the, uh, uh, consultant group working on behalf of the Fire Chiefs Association. They're experts in writing these, these spas for states and so, uh, I anticipate there won't be as many back and forth questions with CMS's.
And did you say that's retro, once it's approved?
It's retro back to the, the beginning of the quarter in which the spa is submitted, so if they can get it done in the next thirty days, then we backdate all the way to July first.
Okay.
And, uh, Medicaid was certainly, uh, aware of that and, and the need to get us additional funding. So that's, that's moving forward. We, uh, we had, um, uh, continued meetings last week on our governance, uh, not the governance, the, uh, state task force for, uh, kind of, uh, designating EMS as an essential service. Uh, had some great meetings. The, the governance is continuing to look like the, the, the bill is gonna be drafted in a way that the counties would be responsible, not necessarily for the provision of EMS, but to ensure that EMS is being provided. What they're trying to do is, is, uh, put it on the county commissioners to make sure that it happens, but it can happen in many different ways. They could hire, uh, or they could, you know, contract with a city, they could contract with a fire district, um, create their own system like we have here. Uh, many different ways it could be done. We, uh, um, on that governance committee, we had sender Mark Harris. Um, he's the Chair of J-Loak, Absota Springs. Uh, he felt like we were headed in the right direction. Um, the next portion that, that the governance committee, which I'm on, the governance committee, um, what we need to tackle next is how are we gonna fund this thing? Um, so a lot of things were talked about. One of the, the issues that, that I brought up was, uh, after the, the bill or the language and the law changed for twenty twenty, it doesn't really allow the county commissioners to do anything other than try to go for a super majority vote to pass a new levy. Um, and, and I always hear a lot of talk about a, a board not being able to obligate a board in the future, but that's exactly what occurred in nineteen ninety-six when they didn't set the levy high enough. They obligated you all to, um, a problem that you don't really have a solution for unless you can convince taxpayers to raise their own taxes. And so, there has been some discussion around that, but I think, uh, um, what we'll come out of this with is, uh, you know, it's all dependent on what happens this year in, in the session um, as far as property taxes go, cause I, I can imagine that that conversation is gonna continue about, um, trying to move away from property taxes in some way, shape, or form. Um, but we'll, uh, we'll continue that work. But the, uh, we are making some progress, um, and, uh, we hope to have legislation ready to go by, you know, November. Um, some of this is gonna be probably a two-year process, but one thing we don't want to do is, is get in there and have them approve it as an essential service without anything backing that up.
Sure.
And, uh, make it feel like, hey, we, we did something good when really nothing had been done, done other to say now it's essential, so.
What's turnover? Percentage turnover, um, this, in the session, it's gonna be?
It's big.
Big.
Yeah.
It's big.
I don't know what the percentage is exactly. Is it forty?
Uh, that's just vaguely, I thought by reading something.
It's a lot of education.
Um, and that's a, a, a good segue into, um, I was asked by the EMS Bureau to, uh, put together an EMS day at the Capitol, and so I'm working with the Bureau. I'm working with, um, Sarah Westbrook, Sarah Betwiser with the Fire Chiefs Association to do this right, because we don't want to go down and just have a bunch of apparatus sitting out there in January that nobody wants to go out and look at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the idea is that we're gonna have in the rotunda, um, a bunch of tables set up so that legislators can come up and we can get a chance to get in front of them and let them understand how EMS works in Idaho and what the problems really are. Um, the, uh, uh, the O P E report, I think will be a big portion of that because it, it really tells the tale of, of the issues that we face in, in Idaho, so. Um, we're looking to, to do that probably in the first, uh, couple of weeks of the session, uh, is the idea and so we're working on getting a date reserved.
Have you had conversations with, um, Mike with Moyle?
I have not, um, but, uh, Chief Tominski meets with him two or three times a week.
He just mentioned to me that he thought privatization was a better way to go, so he's somebody you're gonna have to run over.
Yeah, I was really, uh, surprised last year, but he really helped support the GMT bill and got us pushed up the first lead agenda that day, so. Um, I think that Chief Tominski has been a big help for us out there in the last year. He actually went out and helped, uh, uh, Representative Moyle work on his combine. That's how he got time with him. And now they meet frequently.
There you go.
Do what you gotta do.
Perfect.
That's, that's a big task. I've, I've worked on combines before.
I don't know what to do with the combine.
Well, they need to pair all the time. That's what you do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, um, how's your, uh, work out at the fair going?
Is Mister Chair, it's going? I haven't, uh, had anything come across my desk and it said that we've had anything extreme out there. Um, you know, the, the staffing has been really good at the fair this year. Um, people are down there doing that, that work. Uh, we did adjust staffing a little bit to not have so many people at the beginning part of the day um, and ramp up staffing when it becomes hotter and more people show up in the evenings and that seems to be working. and more people show up in the evenings, and that seems to be working well. Um, we do have that same group of people, uh, Dina and Cameo down there testing, you know, Bob's staff and then the, the talent and the, uh, stagehands every morning, uh, to create that bubble to make sure that Bob and his staff and then, you know, the talent as they come through can make it through the fair without an issue, so.
Yeah, well, that's good. Uh, I did notice your staff, uh, I took, uh, my two granddaughters on, on Saturday. And, and, uh, there was an elderly woman that, uh, just right near the entrance had got a heat stroke or something. Your staff showed up and picked her up.
Are there water stations out there?
There, there are some water se, there's, there's, uh, one water fountain that I'm aware of and, and you would have to ask Bob, uh, Batista for sure. But, uh, it's at the, uh, I think it's Gate C at the bathrooms over there. And you'll see people line up with their water bottles to get them filled there. Um, you know, outside of that, there's water for purchase in many different places, but Bob would know everywhere that they have water. I know during the music festival, that water fountain, you know, it'll be a, a hundred-foot line.
Well, that's not good. We need to have more water out there.
Yeah, with this heat particularly, because the, uh, the, uh, and, and that's what was, it was an elderly woman. She was, she wasn't passed out, but she was clearly troubled and too hot. And, uh, and your staff picked her, and there was a couple of sheriff deputies and your staff, and they were, they had the mobile thing there.
Yeah.
It was, uh, it was pretty cool. Anyway, I'm glad they got, got, got that. And I'm sure there's been others too because the, because the heat.
Yeah, you, you know, we, uh, we see a number of patients down there on a daily basis, anything from allergic reactions, um, bee stings and, you know, heat-related issues. It runs the course.
Flying off the mechanical bull on their head.
Just wish.
Hopefully they don't have much of that, but, uh, it could happen.
Double dog dare you to.
Right after Commissioner Beck.
That would be fun to have at this, at the staff party, wouldn't it?
It would.
You might have to look into that. That's a good idea.
Well, the way they, the way they do it, I, I did see a little, you know, about eight-year-old boy or something like that riding it. And, and they handle it really, and then they, oh, yeah, they, 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 the, the operator was being real careful. It was pretty cool. Yeah, but there's no actual live bull down there giving ride.
Maybe we start having rodeos this year.
Okay, well, do we have anything else?
No, just thank your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Oh, one, one, are you still averaging about three?
Little over three, yeah. Yeah, it's interesting, you know, you'll see daily spikes like yesterday, uh, it was seven. Um, but it all averages out to three and, and, uh, it's just been trending that way for, uh, probably about two months now. We had that little peak with, uh, the, um, the last set of variants that came through, but, um, we'll see more, I'm sure.
No, kids are back in school already, some of them, so that's gonna be part of it.
Yeah, school's back in the, back in. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit German.